Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the August 15, 2016, meeting of Cumberland County Board of Commissions to order at this time. Would ask that Commissioner Jimmy Keefe bring our invocation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Withstand and following the invocation, we'll do the pledge. Dear Lord, be with us as we do the business of your people. Give us the wisdom to represent all, the strong and the weak, the rich and the poor, and all of us as children in your eyes. God bless our armed forces, our first responders, and all those who protect us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Keefe. At this time, we will proceed with some recognitions. It seems Cumberland County brought home all the awards and everything from Winston-Salem this weekend, so we're going to recognize those now. This time, I'll call on Commissioner Lincoln.
Thank you. Our first gold medal recipient this weekend during the annual North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference in Forsyth County. Chairman Marshall Fairclough was elected to a two-year term as the NCACC District Six Director. Chairman Fairclough will represent the District Six counties, which are Cumberland, Harney, Sampson, on the NCACC Board of Directors for the ensuing term. And we know that Chairman Fairclough will go do a great job, and we offer him our congratulations. That looks like him up there on the slide.
It's a deer in the headlights.
Yeah. So, congratulations Chairman Fairclough.
Thank you. This is the least of our honors, but I do appreciate the honor and the privilege to serve District Six for the next two years. And if, God willing, anyway, but that's the plan. And that means that I'll represent Cumberland, Harney, and Sampson County with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And I do appreciate that honor and look forward to serving. Thank y'all very much for allowing me to do that. Okay. Next item will be...I don't have...what order? Tell me.
Commissioner Keefe.
That's not on my...okay. Mr. Keefe?
I got this.
I don't know which one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, it is my pleasure and a little bit of privilege, because most of you wouldn't think that this person and I have a lot in common. We have so much in common, they've separated us completely on these ideas. But Charles and I both cut our teeth at the Pebble City Council and then ended up here doing county business. And ironically, we do have a lot in common. And I'm really proud of Charles. Charles was, after his...he's two elections at the city council and two elections as a county commissioner, and doing very well in both of them. This past weekend, Charles is the new second vice president of the North Carolina Association of Black County Officials. He was sworn in at the organizational luncheon on August 13 during the Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in Winston-Salem in Forsyth County. Charles, we're very proud of you, as we are of this whole board, because it was a great weekend for us. And, you know, we need to tell that story, and you're a part of that. So, with that, I know, Charles, you'll go a long way of representing Cumberland County and yourself as you move forward in your leadership presentation. So, as the new second vice chair, Charles, congratulations.
First of all, let me say it's...I'm very happy and pleased with Jimmy recognizing me. I appreciate that. I really do. And we do have a lot in common.
We do.
The caring about the citizens here in Cumberland County and much, much more. So, thank you for that. And I'm very grateful and humbled by this opportunity to serve the citizens of Cumberland County, as well as the state of North Carolina, through this organization. I want to thank God, my fellow commissioners, and county staff. It takes a team, and that's what we have, a fabulous, great team, because we all know that we can't do anything alone. And so, I thank each of you for your support, your encouragement, and your prayers. Thank you so much.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think these next two awards are fitting that I want to come down, because it's not often that you get to do what I'm about to do. Dr. Jeanette Council, would you come down here with me? I think this is something that this community, that this one and the next one are so very proud of.
That's not the one we really wanted to show. The one was where she was screaming at that time.
Yeah, we needed to show that one.
That's the one we really need to show. And I'm not going to go through all the accolades that we could give to Commissioner Council, but the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners presented Cumberland County Commissioner Jeanette Council with the 2016 MH Jack Brock Outstanding County Commissioner Award during the Association's annual conference on August 13 in Forsyth County. That's for the entire state of North Carolina. Y'all were supposed to clap on that.
I didn't know. We missed a cue.
The award is presented annually to a commissioner who has demonstrated special achievement and efforts primarily over the past year on behalf of county government throughout the state or region, not just within his or her county. Ms. Dr. Council was honored along with Wilkes County Commissioner Gary Blevins. The two commissioners served as co-chairs for the Association's 2015-2016 Legislative Goals Committee, which is appointed by the president every two years. The Association conducts a legislative goal-setting process every two years in the months leading up to the long session of the General Assembly. The official goals are presented to each member of the North Carolina General Assembly, the governor, and the other executive branch leaders. And just so you all will see the award that she was giving...there you are. Not like I'm giving it to you, though. And if you were just kind of looking at the screen, you would be able to see some of the pictures. That's the one.
Oh, my goodness.
It was worse than it looked.
Oh, my goodness. Oh.
Dr. Council?
Thank you. Thank you. As Charles has already said, I don't have to tell you I was surprised. I was shocked. Working with the Legislative Committee over a two-year period was a collaborative effort, not only by my commissioners, me and the commissioners here, but Commissioner Gary Blevins, because what we took was just about 400 suggestions from commissioners all over the state. And, you know, each county is so different. We had to get consensus. Our county itself, that most of us never realize, we have more students in Cumberland County than most of the counties have people in the whole county. So, though we all face challenging times, my experience here with my brothers trained me in knowing how to get along, to get what I wanted.
You just tell us.
But I am proud to serve with these guys. I was excited. I am still excited. I have not jumped that high in 18 months. But it was...it was amazing. That little boy in the white was an armed baby when I was...I became a commissioner. But thank you, guys. Thank you to staff that helped me so much with all of that, with coming up with remarks and...how could I...Lord, my mouth is tormented. But coming up with remarks and what I could say and how I could get around to include everybody, all-inclusive, that was a job. But it worked because everybody helped me. Everybody helped me. So, I accept this on behalf of each one of you. I'm going to pass it down. You can touch it. Thank you so, so much.
That's real wood, too. She came out of her shell.
I knew I could jump that high.
This time, I'll ask Commissioner Edge to join me at the podium, please.
We asked the two with the worst foot problems and leg problems to come down here, so that's just how it turned out. Cumberland County Commissioner Kenneth Edge was one of the newest members of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Hall of Fame to be inducted this weekend in Winston-Salem. And he's been a county commissioner since 2000. He's served as the chairman and vice chairman three times in 16 years, which is a lot of work, I can attest. But the Hall of Fame recognizes individuals who have been active in the NAC, as we call it, including service on the Board of Directors and those who have made significant contributions to county government at either the state or national levels, such as leadership roles with the National Association of Counties and, of course, our state association, while maintaining excellence in his service to Cumberland County on the local level. Commissioner Edge was elected as the NAC president after serving as president-elect in 2010 and his second vice president in 2009. He also served on the Association's Board of Directors in 2004, 2005, and 2007 through 2016, and on the group's Public Education Steering Committee. One of his key initiatives as NAC president was promoting healthy living. Excuse me. Commissioner Edge has been active nationally and served on the National Association of Counties Health and Human Services Steering Committee and is a current member of the NACO Finance Committee. And I'm going to tell you, it was a sad day for me when this guy told me he wasn't running again. I'm going to miss him. He's been a great mentor to me. I thought I knew a lot about being a county commissioner until Ken showed me that I didn't. So, I have learned...I have learned a great deal from this guy right here, and I'm really going to miss him in the future. If I get to come back without him, I'm going to find those footsteps hard to follow, but I'm going to do the best I can. Ken, we salute you. We thank you. And the mic is yours.
I didn't jump quite as high as Dr. Council did, but I was honored. I was humbled by this award, because I'm one of 15 people that are in the Hall of Fame. And in that Hall of Fame are some really great people that have served, I guess, maybe longer than I have. Some have served in a different capacity than I have. But it's, as I said the other night, it's a compliment to my family, and particularly my wife, because all of these guys and girls know that you can't do this alone. You do it with the support of your family. And I've certainly had that. You can't do it alone, because you have to depend on staff and your fellow commissioners to support you, and they've certainly done that. The NCACC staff, the...they have been there. The state commissioners have been there. It's particularly rewarding when you're chosen by your peers for an award such as this from all over the state. And I'm going to miss them. It's going to be a little bittersweet. I'm going to miss this group. And last, but certainly not least, to Kelly Beam and Candace White. All of us will attest to the fact that we couldn't do this without them. They keep us straight, and even with our differences, they never get upset or impatient with us. And we thank you for that, Candace, you and Kelly particularly. We've got the best administrative staff there is in the state of North Carolina. They were all there supporting us the other night, cheering us on, and just making it for a pleasant experience. And then, there's one last group that I feel like that we all owe tribute to, and that is to the citizens of Cumberland County, because if it were not for you, we wouldn't have this opportunity to serve and to learn and to grow. And so, I thank you for that. And I hope you'll still see me around a little bit as we move forward with my life. And I'll be here until the first Monday in December, and I'm not going anywhere. So, thank you again, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
This time, we'll make a symbolic presentation to Ken for picture purposes, since we want this in our local magazine and for our employees to take my hand.
Very good. Thank you so much, and I'll do the same. I'll let you all touch it. Don't spit it.
Still, we're chatting. Cumberland County shares in that one. If you think about it, right now, serving there are at least 500 commissioners serving right now. And you think of all the ones that have served since they began this award, and he's number 15. That's an elite group, my friends. So, that's a special one.
One question. Jimmy, did that come the trophy house?
No, it didn't. I was shaking.
He looked on the bottom to see, though. He did look on the bottom.
I think that came off Amazon or something.
Shop local.
Okay. So, we got any other recognitions? I see Kirk DeVeere here. Thanks, Kirk, for coming by. Kirk, City Councilman. Kirk DeVeere and Glenn, did you have some?
We've got Brian Manning from the Library Board of Trustees who's here.
Welcome, Brian. I see Chris Frank, who has been on so many committees for us, and thank you for your service. I miss anybody that's served on any of our...well, I see Bill Passick in the back there. Bill's a familiar face to Cumberland County Commissioner. And thank y'all for being here tonight. At this time, we begin our public comment period, and I'll open the public comment period. Do we have any speakers, Madam?
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers, so we got off light. Okay, I'll close the public comment period then, and we'll proceed to approval of the agenda. Ms. Cannon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd ask tonight that the board agree to remove item 2E from the consent agenda, and we'll bring that back at a later time. 2D as well. 2D and 2E.
2D and 2E?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Cannon?
No, sir.
Any board members have anything else? Okay, if not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve with the exception of 2D and 2E.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. We remove Adams 2D and E in discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Adam 2, Ms. Cannon?
The consent agenda. Item 3?
With the exceptions of Adam D and E.
Yes, sir. With the exceptions of items D and E.
Okay, do I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
Move that we accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, that first motion was approval of the agenda.
Item number three are our public hearings, and we'll start with our uncontested rezoning cases. Our first one is 3A case P16-29. Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, ma'am. This is a rezoning of 2.8 acres from A1 to R40 residential. The planning board recommended approval. There is no opposition at the planning board meeting, and I don't believe there's any at this meeting.
Okay, this time, I'll open the public hearing. Are there speakers?
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion number two.
I move to approve the rezoning for R40 residential as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Adam B.
The next case is case P16-30.
Yes, ma'am. This is a rezoning of 7.87 acres from RR Residential and CD Conservancy District to A1 Agricultural. The planning board recommended approval. There was no opposition to the case, and I don't believe there's any this evening.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Madam clerk?
There are no speakers.
Okay, close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on Adam 3B?
Mr. Chairman, move to find the request of rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, take that second, too.
Yes, sir. Move to approve the rezoning of the A1 Agricultural CD Conservancy where the SFSH exists as recommended by the planning staff included in the agenda package and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous. The next item, 3C, is case P16-34.
Yes, this is the rezoning of a little less than 21 acres from A1 Agricultural to R20 Residential. There was no opposition to this request, and the planning board does recommend approval, and I don't believe there's any opposition tonight.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Adams?
I just have a question. Yes, can you put that up? We just recently, didn't we do early in the year another one right by this particular quadrant?
Yes, sir, on the other side of the road.
On the other side of the road?
Yes.
And does this one have water? I mean, because the last one, I think he was getting it from Harney County. He was bringing it in, because we talked about water and sewer and all of that, and I didn't see...because, I mean, we've got a big plot going right across the street from where this one is.
I think the narrative said Linden Water, didn't it?
Not...right, it's Linden Water.
Yeah. Linden Water. How far is Linden Water away from this project?
Well, it's at the property. I believe it's...
The mains are there?
You should bring that up, because Linden is actually happy.
The other one had Harney County...I mean...
Actually, there you go. There's the slide. The water runs right past the property.
Okay. Now, the last one we did, which was right there on that corner across the street, was how...do you remember how...I'm going to put you on the spot. How many units? Because at some point, we've done the corner down by Elliott Bridge. We just rezoned that. We just rezoned this, and then we just rezoned that. And we only have about three schools out there. And at some point, I mean, if all of these go up with the traffic that's coming down that way and the infrastructure that's down there and the schools is down there, have we even had any conversation about that? I know Long Hill is already full, and I know they're talking about building the elementary school. That's down the road over there off Elliott Bridge, but that's going to be down the road. And that's...so, you got Raleigh Road, poor little Raleigh Road Elementary up there on the end, and you got Long Hill. That's not even talking about Pine Forest in terms of when we talk about adding now all of these units on top of the other two that we just did. And I know it falls within the plan, but I think we have to think about some of that growth and some of that infrastructure that's going up on that side of town. And I know we're going to get even more, as 295 has just opened up last week. So, I mean, have we looked...and I know this growth plan didn't have 295 in there, and I'm just...
I do know that...I'll let you know that we, of course, offhand conversation with Dr. Teal, I have. But we do send every case over and get comments from their planner. I'm sure that they do. We do know that that particular property that was rezoned off Elliott Bridge has space there for an elementary school. As far as...it's like it is with transportation. It's reactionary. So, in this part, we know this is one of the, probably the largest growing portion of the county.
Right. And so, for us to dump all of this at one time...I mean, we've rezoned three of these things probably within the last six to eight months. And if all of these builders start building at that rate and that growth, it's just not going to be able to sustain that. I'm not trying to say I don't necessarily agree with this, but we got to think about the roads, the streets, the schools, all of that up there, because they're going to come back and they're going to look at us as to where my kid going to go to school. My school is overcrowded. And that elementary school is down the road from being built. I mean, it's not going to be built anytime is down the road from being built. I mean, it's not going to be built anytime soon.
And we should probably talk with the Board of Education's staff, even though we do communicate on a case-by-case basis.